Hi, John. You're welcome. Something I'm handing out, the talking points. Anybody got one? Everybody all got one? You don't have this one, do you? Everybody got one? You want one, James? You want one of those two? There's not one in your pocket, so this is the talking points. Grant says she's back behind it. Doesn't mean it's the third part. I thought I'd start out first, talk a little bit about where we're at so far and what we've received. Even though most all of this has been in the local newspapers, pictures of what we've received, and outlines of everything that's been in one or two or three of all the local papers, I'm gonna go back over it. The first grant we received was a grant for two vehicles. We actually got two police cars, a Taurus, and an Explorer. We received fifty thousand dollars in grant funds, twenty-two thousand dollars in loan. That was a total seventy-two thousand eighty-seven dollars. Town contribution to that was eighty-seven dollars. The loan payment for that is thirty-five ninety-nine for seven years, starting in this year, 2018. If we had to raise the tax to cover that fifty thousand, based on the tax roll, it would take nine point five cents. And that first grant we got was a seventy-five percent up to fifty thousand dollars. That was the initial amount you could get, fifty thousand. We could have gotten all of our cars at one time, but anything over that amount of money would have had to have been in a loan. Go back and look at Springer, I can mark for it on that, they got three cars. Their third car was all loan. So we could have done the same thing, but I figured we could wait till the next year to get some more cars and get some more grant money. In the cycle of funding, they had money left. So when it goes into trying to spend the money they have left, the fifty thousand dollar goes away. It's still seventy-five percent. So when we went back for the second grant, I had been talking with the USDA representative about some more cars. We were looking at a police car and a truck for James, a Peltor Works truck. In the process, we had some issues with one of our cars, and so we doubled that to two cars and a truck. And the week before, we got a car that gave out on the way to Nashville. Transmission went out on it. It was cost more to fix the car than the car was. So we made it three cars in a truck. So the second grant we applied for was two hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars, with the seven hundred eighty-eight dollars being the town contribution. Of that, in that, we've got a hundred ten thousand in grant, forty-six thousand dollars in loan. We received three police vehicles, two new Tauruses and an Explorer. And we also received a truck for James, a twenty-five hundred tow, four-wheel drive. First new Peltor Works vehicle we've had since 2002. It would take twenty point five cents of tax increase to get the hundred ten thousand dollars in grant money in one year, since we got them in one year. March 2018 is when we, the first two cars in July of eighteen, the second. At present, we have applied for nine pieces of equipment to include new playground at Haynes Park and two vehicles. Now, when we started in this process this time, USDA grant, they received with the shutdown being thirty-five days, whatever it was, they were gonna fund, try to fund everything at seventy-five percent with no fifty thousand cap. She said, "Anything you think you need or would like to have or can supposedly need, put it in the very first grant application." That way, if you can't, if you don't give enough money for all of it, we'll back up and see what we can take out or what we need to take out. So I did. That grant application is three hundred fourteen thousand dollars. Now, I don't know how much money we'd get. We might get a hundred thousand grant, we might get it all. I don't have any idea. I will say, based on, you can really, based on if seventy-five percent of that would be two thirty-five, six thirty-two, it would be a loan for seventy-eight, five forty-four, as a rule. We have forty thousand dollars in our current budget to spend on that playground at Haynes Park. That forty thousand dollars would be part of our money that we would spend in association with the grant. So that loan amount would drop to thirty-eight thousand, five forty-four. At whatever the current interest rate is, I think it's four percent over seven years. The way that plays out is it would depend on if it closes in nineteen or in twenty, based on the fiscal year. And backing up to the second grant, it's seventy-six hundred and thirty dollars a year for seven years, starting in 2019. We did sell four police cars for four thousand dollars. Two of them had to be held away on rollback. That money was put into the miscellaneous revenue fund, and it is enough money to make the first payment on the first grant that we received. If we get all the money, tax increase to get that money is forty-four cents. So you know, if you got all those together, it's about seventy-four cents in tax increase, if you wanted it all back in one year. Over seven years, it would be a ten point five percent tax increase just to cover what we're receiving grant. Moving into the actual what we're asking for, everybody has a copy of that. If you've been in town, but you've seen the big dump truck running around with an orange box apparatus behind it, that is a bandit chipper that we currently have. It was from nineteen ninety-two. It was seventeen thousand dollars and some change. The new chipper, similar to what that is, obviously, model up dukes is thirty-nine thousand oh twenty-three sixty. That is with the box on it, with the chipper, the knives and everything. So obviously, the one we have, as James will verify, is, it's seen as butter days. We keep putting it on life support to keep it running. The second item is a hundred KW three-phase generator for a well five. Well five is the well out to thirty-one. We don't have any generators on any of our wheels. We have a generator we can pull to a wheel, but we don't have a generator that will automatically come on. And working in this grant, I kept working around and getting prices on generators, till I figured out I could go straight to the distributor and get them sold to the town. So I ended up, and the generators in this quote, which you'll see, I ended up saving about fourteen, fifteen thousand dollars off of the first price we started with. So this generator is twenty-nine, three seventy-one oh three. A little four-wheel drive tractor with a sixty-inch mower. We looked at state contract for John Deere. State contract for John Deere was fourteen thousand dollars. We also got a price on a Kubota, and the Mastiff Ferguson was the least expensive of all three. We paid good service out of those, and so that's what we chose to use. That mower will be used for cutting grass on the full lane, the cutting grass at our parks, and the cutting grass on the sides of the street, but will not be used at the cemetery. Zero-turn lawnmowers, Kubota, is what we chose. The John Deere mower was about eleven or twelve hundred dollars more. We got a quote on another mower that was probably twenty-five hundred dollars more. The Kubota, warranty-wise, they were all about the same. So Kubota mowers are the ones we chose. The two mowers we have, a Button and a Buckett. One of them is oh-eight, Delman's Toyota, I believe. And so, you know, they really, they really have done a good job for us, for the town, but it is time that if we can get them replaced, it would be nice to do so. Next item is an amazing machinery, four thousand PSI jetter. We've never owned one of these. This is a trailer with a five-hundred-gallon tank on it, with a thirty-seven horsepower motors, five-hundred-foot hose reels, and a two-hundred-foot hose reel to, you can use to jet out your sewer lines. It'll jet up to eight-inch sewer line, replacement sewer lines. You can use it for pressure washing sidewalks, you can use it for pressure washing concrete at the pool, or even pressure washing buildings, anything else that we would do. A reference on this is we had Creech, Plum, and Cuny, we had two sewer lines jetted over here for five hours.
For four hours.
The bill was almost three thousand dollars that we paid. So we, with this, we'll be up to ourselves. Peltor Works, that oh-two-four truck that we still have, it's got about a hundred seventy thousand miles on it. This new 2019 Chevrolet fifteen-hundred four-wheel drive truck, we'd replace that. It is a, just a extended cab truck with a regular bed on it, with no cool beds. We have two of those, so we don't need a third one. We use that truck mostly for transportation purposes, pulling trailers and lawn mowers and things like that. That's what we're using the four-four lane. That truck is twenty-five, three sixty-eight, on, twenty-seven, six thirty-five on state contract. We've replaced all of our police vehicles with two. We still have the oh-seven Dodge Charger and oh-four Crown B, off which, with the tires we just, we probably spent twelve hundred dollars on those vehicles in this budget year so far. This truck is a Ford F-150 four-wheel drive, police department vehicle. It's built for that, forty-three, three twenty-three is the price of that. If that truck is obtained on this grant, those other two cars will be sold. And all of our fleet will be in the capacity of being under warranty for the next five years. And we'll have expenses, which would be tires and chain of oil, just like James' vehicle that we've got. We had already talked about replacing the playground equipment at Haynes Park. That playground equipment was put there in nineteen ninety-six. The new projection for all the equipment and all the load to put in is fifty-one, five twelve sixty-nine. Again, we have forty thousand dollars in our budget that we put to do that. After that, there's three generators for three lift stations that we do not have generators at. One is Haynes Street, which is right down by the police station. One is the lift station that's southern seats. One is the lift station down past the Pinco plant on the other side, before you get to Selecta. There are two of them, thirty-five KWs, one's a fifty, and the respective prices are as quoted. They were actually put on this at the end. We stopped with the playground equipment, and we added those generators with the hopes that if there was enough money, we'd, that seventy-five percent, that would be a big asset to the town to have those generators where. Beyond that, you see, tax tags, vehicles, attorney fees, for a total of three fourteen one seventy-six. Again, if you get the full seventy-five percent, that's two thirty-five, six thirty-two. Any award will come before this board. Hopefully, at the next meeting, hopefully, we'll know something about him. It will be determined by the board then, what direction they would like to take. My initial thoughts were, if we have to take anything off, we'll take those last three drum rotors off. And then we'll look to do something again next year, if we're lucky enough to be able to reapply. But it just still all comes down to how much money they have, and how much money still come and say, "Okay, I can do this. What do you want to do?" And then we'll kind of see what we pick and choose, but that'll be a board decision that'll be made. Before I turn over any comments, does anybody have any questions? Direct questions about what I said about the items on here? If not, I'd be glad to turn it over for comments, if anybody's from the floor.
I have a question about how this is being conducted. Public hearing is a legal hearing and supposed to be done after a forum is established. I don't understand how you can have a public hearing on a required matter and not call a forum, and then call the meeting forum, anyway. Becky Strickland, nine-nine-one-one, North Chesnut Street. First of all, Commissioner Alford, I want to respond to something you said. You specifically stated at the last August 2018 council meeting, after the second grant was approved, and it's in the minutes that receiving these grants is not coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. Well, where do you think the money comes from? Nothing is free. You pay federal income taxes, don't you? That's where this program, including others, is funded with. It's disturbing that you, a steward of public money, think that way. Most importantly, however, this town should not be given a third federal USDA grant for any amount of money until the mayor, the board, the town administrator, and town clerks account to the public for the first two. That's a little bit of what we just got tonight, and we wouldn't have gotten that if I hadn't made a trip to Raleigh last Thursday. Where are the approved minutes from the first grant loan? The special call meeting on March twenty-sixth, 2018. Not on the website. They had to be approved in open public meeting when you submitted documents for the first grant. Where are the resolutions and assurances the town had to submit and made a part of the official meetings as well? How much was the first two grants with the two new police cars? How much was the loan? Well, you answered that tonight a year late. You all have done everything you can to keep the public in the dark about the amount of the first grant and loan, which supposedly we are twenty-five percent responsible for. How did you account for the grant income in the financials? I've looked back every month, from January thirty-first of 2018 to March thirty-first of 2019, and I can only speculate about where that grant income might have been posted. I also don't know how you got the first grant loan with no current audit and letter provided by the local government commission to the USDA as the requirement in the application. Same with the second grant loan, the three more police cars and a new public works truck. Those minutes from the July twenty-fifth, 2018 special call meeting have never been approved and are not on the website. Same question, how did the town get the second grant loan without approved minutes and attachments required by the USDA? I caught you on that one, not the first one, and now, nine months later, those minutes are on tonight's agenda for approval, April eighth, 2019. They're missing USDA documents too, that are supposed to be attached. If the board is spending these monies according to the USDA grant loan requirements, then why are you all trying so hard to hide everything about them from the public? As to the current financials, on March one, 2019, you paid off a sewer lift station loan and interest showing on the detailed credit report, a detailed check record, of sixty-five thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars to Southern Bank. Then on March twenty-seventh, you wrote a hundred thousand dollar check to Southern Bank to be deposited to the general fund money market, and included another, including another hundred thousand dollars to be deposited to the water and sewer money market. Total check amount of two hundred thousand dollars. That's two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars you found in checking from where? Two current water and sewer infrastructure grants, Golden Lake and Secret Department of Commerce. And I submit the funds are already in hand from these previous grants for the four sewer lift station generators and the jetter. As much as this town pays in Golden Lake every month, let them do the jetting under the contract. Elsewhere, it's maintenance and upkeep forever on this equipment for y'all's friends and family. Take away the water and sewer wish list item, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. So that doesn't leave about a hundred and eighty-six thousand, and for what? An industrial chipper for forty thousand dollars, which chews up small tree trunks like the forestry service uses. We may need a new chipper, but in a town of fewer than eight-hundred fifty population, within a geographical area of one square mile, a smaller one like the one we have now is certainly adequate for our town. Cost not to exceed ten thousand. And the old one should be partly surplus and sold with money returned to Public Works. Next, after the first two grants loans, another new police vehicle, vehicle to park at the bank, the 2019 Ford F-150 Cruze, four-wheel drive. Forty-three thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars will give you bragging rights with Ness County because they have one. It's too big to be a police intercept vehicle, would even take a large part of the town's geography, turn it around in. Every full-time police officer in Middlesex already has a brand-new car from the first two USDA grants. Five of them, including two SUVs, excuse me, that can hold a lot of cargo if necessary. Then the Chargers parked at the bank every day, and then they're stripping the new truck out, making it a seventy thousand dollar vehicle once the mayor is done. Then the thousands and thousands of dollars in auto and auto supplies, departmental supplies, and upkeep expenses after the purchase, which the board never considers important. Those contracted services are given to your families and friends, primarily the Lewis's, the Stanns. No minority contractors, no women. This vehicle is absolutely unnecessary for a town and police department, both sides, given what we already have and are paying for. I'm almost done. Another new truck from Public Works, a Chevrolet fifteen-hundred four-wheel drive for twenty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars. First of all, it's gonna cost a whole lot more than that until the car is still in this vehicle too. The town Public Works department only has three full-time employees. James, the director, already has a new truck from the second USDA grant. The old trucks are still being used by the other two employees, I presume. Nothing is being surplus and sold for Public Works as a result of these grants and loans, which is current when I wrote this. Same with the grass mowing equipment, only two employees with possibly more grass at one time. The town already has a sixty-three thousand dollar red Mastiff Ferguson, purchased in June 2013 with all the bells and whistles. Excuse me, Mastiff Drive. Accessories and a mowing deck, lots of maintenance over the years. Another Mastiff Ferguson, even a small one, is simply redundant. At most, the town needs only the two new Kubota zero-turn mowers totaling four thousand seven hundred and three dollars. Then, only with the understanding that the town surplus and auction off, at public auction, the old lawn mowers to the general public. I'd like to bid on one of them myself. Next, replace the playground equipment at Haynes Park for fifty-one thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. That's another absurd price. The town already is a perky area in this year's budget, forty thousand for new playground equipment at Haynes Park. And why forty thousand? Because the mayor knew last year he could get it for that, and probably less, I submit. It's just a small neighborhood park, this is the town's smaller population and geographical area. No vehicle purchases would negate the one thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars tax tags and fees, et cetera, added on. That leaves two mowers at twelve thousand seven hundred and three dollars, and a chipper not to exceed ten thousand. I think that's doable for us, and all we need. We may want more, but we don't need more. If the board were to ask us what we would like to see in a USDA facility grant loan, as for me, I would like to see the library and services expanded. The town already has the building, the vacant dentist office, which is never even broken even. The town could remove and sell the dental equipment, shore up the upper floor with the library shelves, books, computer stations, a lounge and Wi-Fi area, separate for kids, and the downstairs could be a small kitchen area for staff, and then meeting and event rooms for the public. What a legacy that would be for you all. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody answer a reason I didn't like the slide? Anybody have any questions? If not, I declare this public hearing over. I have a regular meeting to order, and begin with a prayer, plus prayer. Congrats, Southern Paul, thanks for this day, thank you for allowing all of us to be present today, be with each and every one of us as we work to do the best we can for our town. Thank you for the rain that came, and thank you for so far we've missed the inclement weather, and hope we continue to do so. All these things we asked in your name, amen. Okay, we're going to start right out with John Anthony O'Seager. John, glad to have you.
Thank you.
If anybody doesn't know, John is our accountant, he does our audit for us, and been doing it for thirty?
Thirty or so years, yeah. I wanted to come, and the audit report is not ready. The audit work itself has been finished, and the report is in rough draft. It's just not been typed up and approved and all that. And I wanted to give you some information as to why, and also, you know, give you some numbers that are going to be in the audit report, because you'll see that when it's all said and done, you're going to get a good report, like you have in all other years. The town is in very good financial condition. But I had decided after last year's audit process, I've been doing town audits since nineteen seventy-five, and I was just kind of burned out. And so, we have a senior staff accountant that's been, he and I have worked on town audits together for forty years. And my son, who is a CPA that works for us, and he's been with us for about five years and has worked on town audits all his time. So they said they wanted to continue doing them. I said, "Well, that's fine." And I'll just kind of be in the background, and of course, I'll let the overseen the work that's done and prove it and that sort of thing. Well, the senior staff person, he is extremely sick. We think it started about this time last year, but by midsummer, he was just in really bad shape. And turns out, he has got a, it's a life-threatening illness. And so, he's been working part-time. He was not able to work at all on any town audits this past year. But my son stepped up and he got the audit field work done back in the fall, did a really good job. And I wanted him to go to the next step and write the audit reports. And town audit reports are, they are extremely difficult to write. They're very tedious, you've got, they're seven pages long, you've got really two sets of financial statements in there for each fund, done on two different bases of accounting, and you have to reconcile the two of them and show that. And so, they become very difficult to prepare, and I've always been the one that's done those. So he had a very strict learning curve. And so, he worked on those, and then, you know, next thing we knew, it was Christmas, and then it was tax season, and so here we are. You know, this has not happened in the past. I think we've got a pretty good track record with you guys. And I don't think our senior guy is likely to be involved this coming year. If he gets well, that's fine. But I had committed to my son that I would get more involved in it, so, you know, we won't be back here next April the eighth, I can promise you that. It's just a, just a one-time thing that happened that we didn't foresee. And, you know, in a small, small-town firm like ours, you know, there are only a few of us that even do town audits. Not everybody has experience in it, so we're just stuck having to deal with what we got. So anyway, I do expect to have the audit report at your next meeting. And again, when it's all said and done, you'll see that it's a good report. And so, I've got some numbers that I just wanted to give you tonight that will back that up. In your general fund, the unrestricted cash at the end of June was seven hundred and four thousand dollars, compared to six hundred and nine thousand dollars previous year. So that's an increase of nine and four thousand dollars. Now, that's a pretty good increase. If you go from six oh nine, increase it by ninety-four, that's about fifteen percent increase from year to year. And that's with, you know, making it all your debt payments and any capital outlays. So your cash position is in, is in very good shape. And when you, when we go through the audit report, you'll also see that each town department operated within budget, which is, of course, required by state law, which did, I think, a good job of setting your budget for last year, and then monitoring that and making amendments as you needed. The budget that you had, you had appropriated fund balance of a hundred and six thousand dollars. And it turns out, you ended up, which meant you were gonna have a deficit for the current year, and we're gonna use some of your accumulated funds, which is perfectly legal. But as it turned out, you had a surplus for the year of sixty-five thousand dollars. So instead of using a hundred and six thousand dollars of accumulated money, you've added sixty-five thousand dollars to your general fund balance. So your general fund, I think, did very well. Your insurance fund, total cash at the end of June was five hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, compared to the previous year of five eighty-three. That's an eleven thousand dollar increase. The insurance fund is accounted for differently. Back out appreciation, on a budgetary basis, you had a surplus of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for the year. Not counting the principal payments on the debt, that's pulled out separately. So your insurance fund did well. You're down now to, you owe a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars to Southern Bank on lift station loan, and I think that's all the debt that you got at this point, so the.
And we just played that today.
Okay, yeah, this is the time of year we have to pay this. So, I mean, again, your town is in good financial condition. We're just having trouble, we've had trouble getting the audit report done. There's nothing sinister going on here. We're trying to withhold information. We just haven't been able to get the final report done. So anyway, I just wanted anybody to know that we had some extenuating sort of sanding this year, that hopefully, we'll be able to work around in the future and get things back to normal. And I expect to be here next month to present the actual audit report.
Any commissioners have any questions? Please extend our thoughts and prayers to Garrett.
Okay, thank you.
And I thank you, Kenny.
He's working part-time, but he's not what he was two years ago. And he's told some clients he's fighting for his life, so we'll see.
And he's still in some climate he's fighting for a lot, so we'll see.
Okay, thanks, sir. Next on the agenda is Tammy Viset from the New Senior Citizens Center.
Let me come tonight and speak to you for just a minute, excuse me. I just wanted to take a minute and introduce myself. My name's Tammy Viset, and I'm supervisor at the New Southern Ash Senior Center. Just to give you a quick update, we opened at the ribbon cutting on March eighth, two thousand nineteen. We had about two hundred and fifty people show up, so we had a tremendous turnout. Our first full day open was Monday, March eleventh, so we've been open exactly twenty-one days today. And we couldn't have asked for things to go any better. We've signed up approximately a hundred members, our attendance is growing daily. If you have not been, I would like to personally invite all of you to stop by and take a tour. It's absolutely beautiful. We have a multipurpose room where we're able to do video aerobics, luncheons, we do bingo in that room. It'll be used for crafts, that type of thing. We have a very nice kitchen that'll be used by the members and for the members. Fitness room that is loaded with very nice equipment, and a game room with two pool tables and card tables. So, I'm there every day, the center's open from eight to five Monday through Friday. And I'd again like to invite you all to come out and see me, I'd love to give you a tour of the building. Also have with me tonight our newsletter, which includes our calendar for the month of April. And if it's okay, I'd like to leave some with Lori, so that you all will have our calendar for the month of April, see what we've got going on, and I'd love to see you all stop by. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them, love to see you all.
It's definitely, Ann went, I went, it's definitely an asset, Chair Lane went to the audit, there was a really good crowd, it's definitely an asset to this city county, it's a great building, it really is nice.
The community is definitely responding in a great way, it was much needed, sure is. So y'all come see me, I'll be there, love to take you on a tour, and I'll leave this with Lori.
Okay.
Thank y'all so much.
Any commercial for anybody, any commercial, got any questions, Tammy? Mr. Franklin might comment about some minutes being missing, and I'd like to thank her for finding that. I only looked at one, there's four sets missing. Here's a copy of them. There's a three, there's one intact. There were two sets of, there were two, there were two sets of minutes from the grants that were omitted but not on purpose, and there was two more sets, I'll leave for four call meetings that we had, that were not left out on purpose. Those things are all human, and I'll stand, I'll take the blame, the blame for it, because I'm across before, looking at this packet at the end, I missed it. So, feeling blamed, blamed, blamed. So, in the approval of the minutes, we have the current and one from July twenty-fifth. I also want to add these three sets, from January two thousand eighteen, a special call meeting. From March twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, a special call meeting. This was about grant, the very first grant I ever received, the twenty-fifth was about a grant, and the December nineteenth meeting. So there were four special call meetings. Everybody was here for the meetings, the minutes were in house, they were in the book, they were just not put into following minutes or the following meeting to be approved. So I request to add those for approval tonight. If somebody can make a motion in that fact, that works for me.
I'll make a motion to include all the minutes that were omitted.
Is there a second?
A second.
Made by Ann, second by J.W., all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Does anybody need a minute to glance at these before we approve them, all with one motion? Do please take all the time you need to look at them. When everybody's had enough time, I'll accept the motion to approve them all. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Made by Danny, second by Chair Lane, all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, aye, say it, motion's carried. Any other amendments to the agenda? Does anybody have any time? If not, the rest of the agenda stands as printed. Somebody want to make a motion to approve it as printed?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Made by Ann, second by J.W., all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, aye, say it, motion's carried. Gloria, the board report.
We have some expenses in March, as Becky mentioned, the two hundred thousand dollar check that we planted, we did move some money to the money market accounts, the interest-bearing money market accounts. Let's see what page that, um, would be the check that was for two hundred thousand. That Lou mentioned or Becky mentioned, trying to see what page that is.
Took a turn to page one of nine in the tri-balance. The checks are actually in the check register, we played one of nine in tri-balance, you see, the tri-balance is now five twenty-four, six fourteen. We added a hundred thousand dollars to our general fund.
There's a couple more expenses.
And then, I haven't discovered, in six of nine, the water and sewer money market, we added a hundred thousand dollars today. So that was two hundred thousand dollars taken directly out of the checking account placed in interest-bearing money market.
We did buy some new trash cans and recycle cans that Carol and Vigo environmental systems, and on page forty-three of the check register was three thousand four thirty-one forty-seven. And then I got the bank balances this week, and when we moved the money, the cash in the bank wound up being three hundred and eighty-five thousand, three sixteen, sixty-eight. Simple depository wound up being two hundred and ninety-five thousand, six sixty, eighty-five. And then the other, the water fund was eighty-nine thousand, one fifty-nine, seventy-eight for the month of March. And that was done either, other than the other expenses on the check register.
Any commissioners have any questions about that? We tried to go through the check, the check detail this time and highlight the print, the write-in. On page fifty, on page fifty of the numbered pages, and it's twelve thirteen at the bottom, there was forty-four hundred and seven dollars for sewer bars for assembly installation. That's kind of an abnormal amount of money, so what we'll try to start doing every time moving forward is making sure that we put these amounts, buy a check that's not a normal operating or a normal operating expense. He's back at the page forty-nine, the Southern Bank. That payment was sixty-three thousand dollars, plus the interest was sixty-five, three twenty-nine. We have one payment left, like that, that was on the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was borrowed to do lift station renovation with three years ago. If you look on page forty-eight, numbered page, ten of thirteen, see, twenty-four eighty-one, there are checks to logic. That was for three months of maintenance. Logic didn't build us, so we didn't pay them, so they built us. So, we almost didn't move the money. I think that's probably, but again, we're going to try our best moving forward to make sure we write in, buy these checks in the check register for whatever for, if it's an out-of-normal expense or something that's going on.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions about the report? No, I'll accept a motion to approve. Made by Chair Lane.
A second.
Second by Ann, all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, aye, say it. Chief? Anything outstanding for you tonight?
No, sir, for, I don't have anything other than just, you know, my monthly report. We have about fifty calls of service, like about a hundred and seven traffic stops, full rest, rest of it in there. Just want to add that Rodney has been doing a good job out of it. We've spent a lot of time out at the school with that new position. He's out there usually in the mornings and afternoon, and he's built a lot of good relationships with the kids, who are, a lot of them are residents here in town, and building that relationship. And I'm just real proud of our apartment, not just Rodney's position, but everybody, all the way to the part-time guys. I think everybody's doing a wonderful job for the town. And I hope the board sees that and very proud of what they're doing in the town with their rest. Rodney's really helping us a lot with their rest and things like that. When we have, when we have a situation that happens, we want to make a, we want to make a rest pretty quick if we can. So far, we're doing a good job, and those guys are working real hard to make sure that they represent the town well. So I just want to throw that out there. Thank y'all. Thanks, sir. I think you do a lot of work on that side.
James, do you hear this report on page fifty-six? Anybody else have anything they'd like to say, including James, if you have anything you'd like to say, or...
Yeah, just Cody, Cody's doing real good, he's helped us out a lot, he's been careful, he's helped states a lot, so he's doing a good job too.
How about the grease problem, is that still...
It's still bad in certain, in certain spots. We gotta pull a pipe out there and see around a couple more times, a couple degrees. I'm looking in, trying to find something that maybe help break it up, so...
Anything else? Permits, we had three miscellaneous permits over the fences or youthful buildings or something like that. House permit kind of slowed down a little bit, we called it the wet weather we had. Guy said it does pick back up here a little bit. And just FYI, it will be swimming pool season as of May twenty-fifth through September the second. Anybody has any thoughts about that? You can express those at the next meeting. We will need to paint the pool this time, and so we'll probably start working on that a lot of part this month. Getting it cleaned up and getting it ready. Any commissioners have anything? And Danny, you usually ask it, but there's nothing, nothing on the horizon, nothing's come through yet on the shell building. They're still working on that, so we don't have anything, anybody moving in there yet. Any commissioners have anything? Old business, the water tower, if anybody's seen it, I think they did a good job, they got it painted, it looks really good. I've had a lot of positive comments about it. I think it's just another good thing happening in town. Also, Dell Brown got here and got the roof replaced on the police department in the plumbing building. He had to put twelve hundred dollars of rock and wood on there beyond his quote, I think the quote was sixteen four, we paid him seventeen six. So, just FYI on that. We're still working on what to do about the windows, I've actually talked to two more people, I've got some more people coming to look. The chief and I have had a conversation about maybe doing something to the upstairs, trying to make it a lot nicer or something the police department could use, there's a pretty big, pretty big room up there, and if we do a little work on it, we can make them have their own meeting room, and maybe a little butter exercise facility up there than what we've got. So it's a shame to have all that space and not be using it. Their monthly meetings and things that they do, they can meet up there instead of using the community building. So we'll kind of see how it goes, get some pricing on that, and when we got a little, a butter handle on it, we'll bring that information back to the board.
Yeah, I don't have any funding.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we checked, we checked behind it after the day of the meeting. In new business, we have two quotes, page fifty-seven, fifty-eight, for painting the public works building. We had actually got two quotes before, went back and got two more quotes to paint that building.
What happened is copying, yeah?
It's bad. It was light and it got, it got light. So this is from Johnny Denton, who actually did the painting on the front of the building, had done some painting here for us, and his quote, the paint, later on, paint included, painted seventeen hundred dollars. And from Kenneth King, who's done some painting for us and painted it the pool last year, his quote is twenty to fifty. So I figured, now we've got, the weather's going to get buttery, it's going to get sunshiny. We've got the tower, it's finished, so we don't have to worry about any overspray coming down from that. Although I think they did a pretty good job about that, looking after it when we invoked and stuff. So I will present these two quotes, and accept it, be glad to answer any questions. That building, we painted double bricks around that building, obviously, that, when it was laying on the wing, and the whole building needs to be painted, it's fixed on the backside, so. What do y'all think?
Is the Denton guy using the same quality of paint as the King guy?
Yeah, we know the Denton, Denton is, we planted the front of their buildings, the three guys, manning his two sons, and they painted it the library. I mean, they do a good job. What they always say, didn't they, they painted that at the park? They painted the shelter at the park, they were ones on that. I mean, that would be my recommendation, especially considering their four, five hundred and fifty-dollar plus money.
Want to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we go with Johnny Denton for the paint of seventeen hundred dollars.
Second.
So a motion to use Mr. Johnny Denton for painting the public works building for the quote of seventeen hundred dollars from Danny and a sucker by J.W., all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, aye, say it, the motion's carried. On page fifty-nine, here's a budget amendment. When we put the budget together, we put six hundred, we put six thousand one hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-four cents under a police department line item for the public works position in the insurance column. This most, we need a motion to move that money. That money will move in from that line item, which won't affect the police department because they still got all their money. This was put in, put in there by accident or incorrectly, and the board tried to get it. But that money will be split amongst four departments to cover insurance, especially now that we have hired Cody on full-time. They give us enough money in each department to do that. Comes out of police, it goes into water and sewer, streets and sidewalks, and what the fourth one, the cemetery. So, we're just moving it and splitting it up between departments based on the split out of the pay for that position. That's the way it's been squared. Questions? I need a motion to approve this amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment, strength of notice from police to public works position. A second.
Made by Ann, second by Chair Lane, all in favor, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed, aye, say it, the motion's carried. C is the police department... C is the police department operating policy. All right, we'll get to speak again. Read every fifth page from the first debate, I mean, from start to finish, just read the first sentence from every fifth page.
Well, this is the, um, operation manual that I promised the board that I would start on the meeting when I was hired. It's almost took two years. I know it's pretty thick, it's a lot to read. Something that's needed at every department and it was especially needed here. It was not really an operation manual. When I started, there was a couple of pieces of paper that says y'all not do this and y'all not do that. Just about every department in the state of North Carolina has an operations manual that's something to give the guys for them to read, to know the do's and the don'ts and how to handle certain situations. And as y'all can see, there's everything in here from mutual aid to field training programs to secondary employment, part-time officers and things like that. I, I'd like to take credit for all this, uh, but I did, uh, on the last page, I talked to a lot of other departments. I used their manuals, uh, went by a lot of their stuff. Some of their stuff had more detail than what I thought we needed for a small town, some had not enough. And uh, so I tried to make sure that I credited them, um, with, you know, with using their information, just like I'm sure that if you guys approve this, that, uh, Bun, North Carolina will probably be crediting in middle sex when they get their hands on it, because they've already called it. They're gonna be doing the same thing. And so, uh, what I'd like for, for the board to do if, if we're, and I, like I, I told the mayor, this may not be perfect for us moving forward, you know, anytime we see a situation that we need to add or subtract, we'll bring it back before the board and say, you know what? We found something here. Uh, you know, as I think I already talked to you guys, and we found a couple where I had started writing this and then before I completed it, we had changed something like part-time salary. So I had to go back and address it in here because when I started writing it, we was at one pay scale and now we're at another. I think it's pretty solid, I think it's, uh, in line with what other departments are going on. And basically what I'd like to ask from the board is a, um, a recommendation to approve this standard operating procedure for the police department. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
It definitely has a lot of information in it, it covers a lot of things and I think it'll definitely be a, a nice addition to the department. And it actually has a bunch of questions, that's for sure. What's your favorite group?
I'll make a motion that we reset the operation manual.
I'm second.
Made by Danny, second by J W, all in favor, let me know when I say aye. Any opposed? Aye, sir, the motion's carried. Thank you, Chief, we appreciate it. At this point in time, it's public comment section, anybody that would like to get up and speak, they're welcome to do so. State your name and we'll give you a little time to talk. Anybody up here? Now, close the public comment section and we'll move into the budget workshop part of this, which will not be very long. As usual, in this time of the year, we don't have a whole lot of information. Uh, there's a few things that we, we do have. Uh, we'll probably get an increase from waste industries based on the G D P going up, our contract allows them to go up, so we'll be bringing that back to you. Uh, it looks like we're, on the taxes, we'll probably have an increase in revenue of about fifteen thousand dollars year over time. That's not set in stone yet, but based on the housing and things we've been building and things we've been doing. The preliminary number looks like we'll have about fifteen thousand dollars, uh, to add to that. We won't have any insurance figures until, probably may, we usually never do. We will start working on the budget as far as expenses, looking at what we spent this year compared to last year. Seeing if there's any increases we feel like need to be made in certain line items. We'll work on that. That's, that's usually how we start. If there's anything that any of the commercials would like to see added to the budget, um, please let us know. James and I have been talking with a couple of contractors about getting us some quotes on replacing, uh, valves in the water system that would enable us to be able to cut off sections of town when we have water leaks. We have valves, we have outdated, a lot of them don't work. I, I'd love to be, to see us be able to, to put some money in the water side of the budget moving forward, starting now. And maybe, and depending on the cost, look at what the cost is gonna be, to be able to take at least a section each year and put enough valves in that section that, okay, we can cut this off, or we can cut this off. You know, we go around, we have these water leaks and we try to, try to isolate it with valves that we can find. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, James can tell you, sometimes you just have to fix them one hundred percent hot, you can't do anything about it. Uh, we will open a fire hydrant if we have to, try to get some of the pressure off that line if it's a really bad, a bad leak. But I think that, you know, we all know this, we've been here what, a hundred and eleven years? You know, some of these water lines have sent to better days. We, 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 I know it's one, but you know, still, we, I was here when we did the sewer rehab and what we didn't dig up and replace, they slit line. Ain't never seen no slit line for water, for water line, you usually just dig it all up, start over. But we would like to, to look to that and we'll try to come with some figures and maybe be able to make some valve replacement part of a, a nineteen twenty budget on the water side. Sewer lift stations, uh, we're approaching five years on, several, five years ago.
Yeah, some of them had to be.
We did, we did put new impellers, that was that forty-four hundred dollars for seven impellers in those pumps that we put there new five years ago. There's gonna be some sewer stuff that needs to be done as well moving forward. My hope would be that the A I A grant, the A I A grant that we got for asset inventory, once completed, would give us the ability to apply for grant funds with that A I A paperwork in hand to be able to get some grant funding and just start doing some, uh, some more rehab to our sewer lift stations. We've done a very good job with the money we spent on, uh, obviously, we had some good help out of the folks in Sanford. Uh, Russell Underwood, they're, they're very knowledgeable and they helped us out a lot when, when we came, when they came in the beginning and got us back on track. Uh, James does a very, very good job of looking after them. I tell people, James is as conscious about what goes on here in town as he is, as you are at your house. He's squirming right now because it's raining. And I mean, and he really is, he really is that conscious. He, he, he's very job dedicated. Again, he does a really good job and if he, he tries to steal that job, two guys that work for him, and I think he does a good job of that for it. So like I said, that's, that's kind of short-lived on the budget, but that's really all the information we have for tonight. What I would love to see us do is to, uh, schedule a budget, a budget workshop after the meeting in May to include a closed session, uh, employee evaluation. That might be a little, that might run on a little long, but we'll already be here. So that way we can go ahead and talk about salaries and increases and things like that. And we'll have that information so we can go ahead and incorporate it into the budget. Kind of like we did last, we said we did it, but we did it in a circle meeting. So if, if nobody has any problems with that, that's, I'd like to have a motion and that would be for May the thirteenth.
Can I make a motion to have a budget meeting May thirteenth in the closed session, I say?
For, 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 for the evaluation.
I'll say.
So that was made by Anne, second by J W, all in favor, let me know when I say aye. Any opposed? Aye, sir, the motion's carried. Now I'll set the infamous motion to adjourn. Okay, Shereline, it's only one of the one of the terms. Give us your second to that. Second by J W, all in favor, let me know when I say aye. Any opposed? Aye, sir, the motion's carried, I thank you everybody for coming, we appreciate it. We've got a lot going on. Okay, Ms. Gloria. Laura, come right up here.